And we all please stand for the invitation and the pledge of allegiance. Commissioner and fellow citizens, one of you does in that invitation.
Dear God, we thank you for letting us gather here tonight and we ask that you will be with everyone here, help us all to have open minds and listen and make decisions that will be in the best interest of our county, our citizens in the county and for you. We ask these things in your name now and ask that all the blessings that we have can we pass along to someone else that we meet along the way this way. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time I would like to call the regular meeting of Gates County Board of Commissioners to order for September eighteenth, twenty seventeen. There is no mention approved because they will be approved at our meeting in October. Our agenda adjustments, I have a few if you will look at those. Under our notice delegations, we add Valerie Riddick, Gates Partners for Health. Under Roman numeral four, Part B. Under Roman numeral seven, old business, strike out historic courthouse update. I guess we'll get that at the meeting in October, hopefully.
It will most likely be at the end of November based on James's email.
Okay. On the new business, if you will, strike out the number five, the appointment to child mortality prevention team. And that is it. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted?
So, sir.
Motion amended properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, on notice delegations, Weaver Harder.
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Harder.
Good.
Could you state your name and address, please?
My name is Weaver Harder. I live at twenty-five Kelly Gates. And the reason I'm coming for you before the board tonight is issues concerning drones. My family and neighbors have been harassed by a video drone as far as video being taken. And the main reason I'm up here because there's when deputies weren't involved, they had no guidelines of what to go by. And the only thing that could be said was it's free space, it don't matter. So then I talked with other county officials and magistrate and the best course of action everybody that we talked about and agreed with was to try to come up with some type of ordinance for drone usage. And that's why I'm here tonight to see if we can't figure something out.
Certainly the first I've heard of this or any of you have heard of it.
Not personally.
Do all counties have ordinances?
I don't know, but that would be something. I know he has spoken with Lisa Cherry and she is reporting to FAA because we do not have anything. And she can't bring this up at the planning board if they would like to involve that entire ordinance.
With FAA be the...
Federal aviation.
Yeah, that would be the...
Yes, sir.
The ones that are about what we normally call statutes, they would be ones that are about the guidelines.
Based on what little sheet told me about last week before she left to go to class.
And they would probably have the regulations as per what the drone is if it comes within their statute. You know, I'm sure that there's certain ones that do not come within the FAA guidelines, like tortures, doing their some of their...
And I know that's, I think in Virginia, there are some regulations about where they can, about flying in certain areas near the naval bases and things like that because they are dangerous to pilots and all. But we will have to investigate.
But, Jeff, I can just say one other thing. And the main reason we brought all this up is it's the video drone part. It's not the drones up, but it's the video, taking videos and pictures and stuff like that. But that's the main reason because it's violation of our privacy. And that's what was brought up with the deputies and all that. And there's no proof that they're taking pictures with the drone, but there's a camera on the drone, but you can't prove that they're doing pictures. And you can't get a warrant to get the SIM card to prove they've taken pictures because you can't prove that they were actually videoing. And there's no way to tell. And that's when the ordinance, you know, like the hover capability is phenomenal on these drones. I mean, I can go right up in your, right up when you're sitting in your back porch and tell them exactly what you're reading. That's how scared it is. And that's the main thing, is the privacy part and the videos and pictures.
Has the...
Mr. Harder, go ahead.
Has it been actually right over your property?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And in your first, your opening statement, you said family also or...
Yes, my granddaughter swimming in the pool and it was hovering. And the only thing I can think of is taking photographs because the kids came running in the house and that's all I do is if they were being harassed, I would go sign us on the drone sitting right there. I mean, it was something like a crime.
The owner of the drone, is it your immediate neighbor or somewhere behind us on the right?
Okay. And he's been bothering another person with it as far as hovering and harassing. And there's just no ordinance, so there's nothing that can be done because I've tried talking with him civil. And so I had to, you know, go to the magistrate and there's nothing in writing that the deputies can do.
Do you have a Google data thing about drone ordinances, you know?
My wife is very adamant about that. And we even, I know as far as got a warrant, the state's magistrate's office or the state's lawyers, the lawyers have...
Charge, yeah.
Yes. And one of the lawyers going back and said, "There's nothing you can do with civil. There's nothing in writing." And that's why everybody's chasing their tail because nobody wants to take the civil responsibility of the invasion of privacy that these drones are capable of doing and will do.
Well, there's something to it that...
Takes a long time.
That things will be constantly changing in the rules and because, you know, every time somebody comes up with a rule, somebody who makes a drone is finding a loophole.
Exactly.
Take it around and change the size of the drone a little bit or change the, you know, just something about it that'll make it not qualify for a statute or something. But Ms. Hopple, you, we can do all the research. And just so you know, we, in our research, we'll be not addressing your particular situation. We'll just be looking at what's out there as far as ordinances and what we want our ordinance to look like. And so we won't be attacking anybody or anything.
Oh, I understand. And that's my main goal here is to not let my neighbors in the rest of the community feel like I'm killing right now. It's awful. And that's the main reason I'm here is to try to let the board be aware and hopefully we can get an ordinance in place that'll protect the rest of the community in future from future problems.
And I do know that in some areas that they have made some qualifications by operation, people who are operating drones because of problems that they've had with interfering with airports. Airports. And all that, you know, because you can go anywhere and buy drones, the appetite is now, you... I was looking at a day for, but it just didn't have one on it.
Some of them are pretty cheap.
And I know a friend is in photography, does a lot of weddings and all, and they'll use drones to get a picture of the big party, you know what I mean?
I'm sure they can use them for business, for assessing rough damage and all that, for lawful purposes.
And farmers use it to do about their crops.
True.
So it's, we'll have to, we'll have to do some investigating, investigating.
I just want to make sure you get the ball rolling in the right direction.
So is the privacy issue with the drones going over your property?
The video drone.
Okay, good question.
Surveillance video. I think if you don't know who the owner will operate or... Well, I know the operator, I already talked with them and went nowhere. Are they, are they looking to be examined? And like I said, I already got this all addressed with the magistrate and I'm getting my evidence and all that together officially, see if anything really is going on. But that's not my account here for to get the ball rolling on this.
Did you personally call the sheriff's department?
No, I did not.
Okay. But somebody did.
Yes.
Okay.
If you want me to tell you, I will. Then how did that happen?
Can you give us the date that called?
Not an exact date, it was a few weeks ago.
Okay. We can catch your address, we can figure it out.
Okay. I was about to say, I'll let that be. I'm off on that one, sir.
Okay, well, thank you for bringing this to our attention and we will look into it.
Thank you very much for your time.
Anthony Saunders.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just a couple of things that I'd just like to talk right off of the night. Now, I was here a couple of months ago when the Little League Hurricanes football team came and asked them for some funds. And I believe Commissioner Jordan was the one that kind of initiated that we should give them a few dollars, I think about a thousand dollars, whatever the suggestion was. And I think also Commissioner Owens kicked in before and raised the bar to fifteen hundred or whatever, two thousand, I think. And when I left that meeting, I was feeling good because I was basically telling the folks, "Look, we got your back, we're gonna let you, we're gonna use some funds to help out." I think the presentation was good by the group that gave it. They pretty much said, "Well, I didn't need the money and I didn't need it." And that's a good thing. I've heard of the Hurricanes, I don't follow football that much, but I knew something as far as youth trying to re-evolve and positive things in the county. Well, I got a couple of phone calls after y'all last meeting that morning. And someone told me that you guys denied them the money for that, for what they were asking. I'm just a little concerned because, you know, these kids can be out here doing anything. But to me, this is like an organized effort of trying to make them do positive things here in the county. Now, I wasn't given all information of why you denied it. But I'm asking if y'all would reconsider your decision you made. Because they're not asking for a lot. And I was also told that we, the commissioners, y'all had allocated some money for the courthouse and there was some more money that was miscellaneous I don't know, that was a good figure from what I was told. I'm just asking for you guys to just search your heart now. It's gotta do it, they need this money. So I'm just asking if you would just think about it, reconsider what you did and hopefully you often give them something, but they really did. And I wish, it's a positive thing. It goes, it goes a lot better in the community when they hear things of what the commission's doing, especially when they come in here. So I'm just, I'm here just asking because I've got a number of phone calls about it. And people call me just like they call you guys. I don't call y'all and ask you guys for anything. And there's some, when I do come here, I'm not hollering like some folks to them and all that, but please, I'm just asking you reconsider what you did and if you find something in your heart to just change that thought and, you know, try to help them get something. The other item I have is Ed Webb don't live here no more, if I can use it that way. Ed has gone, his administration has gone. And we have new sheriff in town, new ideas, new thoughts. I'm asking you guys, give this administration a chance. I know every eye is not dotted, every t is not crossed. But again, I get phone calls about things that are happening here that count back and forth sometimes with some of the sheriff's department staff and sometimes deputies, sometimes sheriffs. I see a positive thing. I think a lot of good things have been done since we ran that department. And I'm just asking that, I mean, there's one person he called and said something about there was a big dispute over a fifty dollar invoice on something that, something to do with some article in the paper or thank you or something. That's petty. You know, we're talking fifty dollars. I mean, anybody can pay fifty dollars. But I guess it was the principle of that article or whatever the thing was, it was told that it was political. And honestly, I did get a chance to see it and I saw none of it on the record. So I just, it might not sound like much, but a lot of time is wasted when we make up a little crazy thing that at the end of the day, that doesn't mean a lot. So I'm asking you guys to reconsider your, your outcome of not, well, I mean, the hurricanes. Well, I mean, it might be another week or two later. And I understand probably a part of you thinks, "Well, if you do it for one, you gotta do it for everybody." But to me, each case should be handled differently. You know, you can tell when somebody is trying to sham you or something and you can tell them if you're really sincere about what they're doing. So I'm just asking you to reconsider, sleep on it, my dad used to say. And maybe you can have a different way of thinking because they did receive the money. And as far as the sheriff's department, you know, like I said, Ed did a lot of things. He did some good things. He did some wild things too. But Ed, I hear, let's work with this administration and the guy and make the county a little bit better. And I don't think we're to the point where we're worrying about people knocking the doors in all out of the night. I think, I think they're a pretty good staff. And I think we got a pretty good deputies that are working in that department. So we're worth us and I'm not saying you're not. But like I said, being the deputy party chair, I get the same kind of phone calls you got there. And I said, "I don't run out here and commission me raising hell, chewing y'all out. I don't call you tonight saying so and so to say this, I don't do that." That's not the style that I operate. So please take these things into consideration and I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comments. I'm not sure how you got your information, but some things that I just heard, there was no allocation made for courthouses at our last meeting. We were not allocated any money.
Okay, I'm just, I'm, again, I bring my commission here.
I mean, I...
Whether it's true or not, I don't know.
And there was a couple of all things that...
Okay. Well, again, I mean, correct me, that's why I'm here. I bring these issues up because that's what people, when people call and talk to me, they give me this stuff. So instead of me calling you at home and trying to figure out is it true or not, I just say my commission and I bring it here. So if what I say is not true, that's fine, I can work with that.
Well, I think that, you know, as far as courthouse, you know, the allocation to fund the repair, that was done quite a while ago, that's in the budget. But additional specific allocations haven't been done. We didn't do that, but we do have a budget for renovation of our courthouse. Maybe that's what they were...
I think, I think part of, bottom line, I think part of this, a lot of people are still concerned that why, if anything was done a few months back, whatever, are still concerned that why we're still putting money into courthouse. That's the bottom line. Some people are into the historic part of it, which is great, but that's where you are. But a lot of people here in county, they just don't seem to need and see why the commissioner wouldn't put that down in my interview. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. I believe that's aligned two. Now you go to the notice delegations and that is Valerie Riddick who is from Gates Partners for Health. And we have a folder on our S for them, from them. Excuse me. Valerie, all right, it's nice to see you.
Nice to see you too, thank you. First, let me just say thank you for the opportunity to be able to come tonight and to present the Gates Partners for Health report. And also separately, thank you for your financial support that you budget for every year for Gates Partners for Health or according to position or any other activity that you need to expend your money. I want to get that out of the way. In your packet, you have a lot of information tonight. So as you can tell, it's been kind of busy. My report covers more than a year. It goes back to July two thousand sixteen up to actually this month. So I'm not going to go through and read each item. You can take a look at it. It is about seven pages, so it's more detailed. Now, I give you about a two-page overview, but tonight I decided to go into a little bit more details of some of the things that I do or other committee members are participating so that way you get an idea of what we're doing out in the community for our citizens of this county. Our regular monthly meetings, chronic disease prevention and management council, we do meet on the second Wednesday of each month at two PM at the community center. And under the chronic disease, we cover anything from council support, diabetes support, a Holy Souls walking challenge. We do Pink Power Luncheon, the Heart event in February. So anything that shows the chronic illnesses, the chronic illness committee pretty much kind of coordinates any activities or events for the citizens, along with participating in community health fairs. There's churches that call us and ask us to come in and set up a table for health fairs or any other community events. The second item is behavioral health committee. They do meet on the second Wednesday as needed at the Gates County Department Adult Service at two PM. And the behavioral health is pretty much there as a support for any of our substance abuse, mental health services needs. We do have RI International, which provides mental health peer support at the Accordia's nursing facility on every Friday at ten thirty. We have our agent and adult service task force, which meets every other Friday at nine o'clock at the Department of Social Service. And also you can see where there's some other activities that fall underneath behavior, dealing with stepping out of elder abuse, where some of our citizens attended the walk on that. And I had the opportunity to attend the informational session on financial exploitation and elder abuse, which was here at, in courthouse in June. And that was a very, very good event. It was sponsored by the Sheriff's Department, Department of Social Service, and State For You Credit Union. So they provided some good information that deals with scams. And as we know, there's a lot of scams out there now and everybody is really concerned about Equifax with information and you probably start to get letters in the mail. I received a letter for a credit card application from my sister who passed three years ago. So we don't know what's going on, but you know, there'll be research. The other committee is our overdose prevention council, which meets every three months and employing. In between the three-month regular meeting with everybody together, we do have smaller meetings, which there's three committees that was established. One was education for school-aged kids, school-aged children. Two is the community resources and three for the providers and prescriber education. So these committees meet separately from the overdose prevention full committee. Also, Gates County has scheduled two medication take back days. The first one will be on October the seventh at Family Funny Fitness Day at the community center from ten to one. Captain Popple will be on site. And also the national take back day is October the twenty-eighth and that will be here at the sheriff's department. Also in your packet, I did give you a brochure on information about what's in your medicine cabinet and that is for your information. It is good, good, good information that deals with the safety of disposing of your medication, the safety for seniors and for young kids. So this brochure is a published brochure from the Department of Insurance and it's from safe kids. So this is for your information, you can read at your leisure. And also I put a little magnet in your folder that says safeguard your medicines. So that means from your kids, or grandkids, or anybody. If you have medication that's out, especially pain meds, you want to make sure that you safely store them. Okay, the other, the other report is we receive funding from PITCH, which is partnership to improve community health. And I did put in your folder the most recent letter from, from PITCH, the last brochure that's in your folder. And the PITCH funds provide support for our school systems and for our farmers' markets. And this year we were able to purchase some items for the schools that have helped them with tobacco-free wheat, red ribbon wheat, tobacco-free smoke-free signage for the local government buildings and schools. And also the Gates County Farmers Market stands, we purchased scales and other items for the farmers' market. If you feel that fine and you need any additional signs for any of your government buildings that may be missing, please let me know. I'll be glad to see if we still have extra signs available that we can get for you. Okay, and the last section is dealing with our community health assessment and action plan. We've been working on this since August of last year and we have now come to the end of it. We've submitted our action plan. We identify our three priorities, which is chronic disease, behavioral health, substance abuse and mental health, and also access to care. So all three action plans were completed, they have been sent off to rolling, we're just waiting for them to come back. You have in your packet a letter that was received, sent to our executive director, Valerie Betts, dated July the fifth, that talks about the accreditation, that we received our accreditation from the community health assessment review, that we met all of our areas and all of our criterias. And actually you can see by looking at where we met and we have a check mark in every category. So you know we're busy, you're working. All right, and then the, the last thing is Family Funny Fitness Day. We'd love to see you come out on October the seventh from ten to one. And we're having a dunking booth. So we would like some of our local government officials to come out and be in the dunking booth and raise some money for us. That means we don't have to come and beg you for money like you. If we can sell them some, some money, raise some funds, then we'll have something to put in our, in our line item. But please come out and support our citizens of Gates County to live healthier, being fit, and just be having a complete family day. So you have that brochure. And before I take my seat, the last item is talking about the opium situation here in Gates County. My church is passionate about it. We have developed a committee of local citizens. It also includes community resources, departments and committees, and also some of our local officials are on the committee. And we're looking to move forward. Like I said, we have two medication take back days scheduled. We are looking to do red ribbon week with the churches. So we're already in the process of sending letters out to all local churches. So on that Sunday, fourth Sunday in October and fifth Sunday in October, you may see your minister wearing a red ribbon that talks about red ribbon week. And you may want to ask them what is it about? So he'll have details on, on the ribbon. Also, we're looking at maybe possibly getting some funding so that way we will know how we can be able to help our citizens moving forward with a forum or with some type of community event, whether it's a block party or something for awareness, because it is a need, along with the support group that's established in the county and the community center. So I think I've covered everything. I don't think I left anything out. You have any questions for me?
No questions, Madam Chairman. I would like to make comment, maybe she can let all citizens know that this year's the seventy-fifth anniversary.
Yes, sir, it is. And I did put your brochure in your, in your folder. So we have the seventy-fifth anniversary.
Do you want to go to the dunking booth?
No, I mean, I do too well in the dunking booth.
Okay, so who wants to go to the dunking booth? Ms. Hopple, you volunteered for the dunking booth?
I did a lot for this team.
I did a lot for this team. I will not say no, but I will not say yes. So this is a tough time.
I will be out there at the soccer game. So if you come over there and twist my arm, I might do it.
Is it a soccer game that day?
Yes.
Well, for the little ones?
Yes.
Well, I'll probably be there too.
I think it's all ages will play soccer. But we'll have so much stuff going on. It'll be, you know, car show this year.
I got to see what temperature it is.
Yeah, well, we'll stay like this. But if it stays like this, you know, we'll be okay. That it won't rain, or even like, we'll be happy, cancel.
And before you step away from the podium, she has, um, certainly very interested in whatever we do. We've got to have the educational program applied to those sports, that she would want to make sure.
We've been discussing.
Okay.
So I'm lending my service that whenever you're ready to start working on it, and Commissioner's over there, and Jordan's shaking his head because he's attended, uh, our last two meetings, and we meet again on Saturday. So we're moving forward, um, because we do see that there, there is a need, and, um, we would like our citizens to, to be helped in Gates County. And Commissioner Owens, uh, what was in your basket that I saw the other night?
I'm already confessing to the board about that.
At the grocery store?
I was shopping for some money, and it was not for me.
Well, thank you. Any more questions?
No, no questions. But probably, probably we'd like for everyone to know too, the Trillium has, has joined in with, uh, with our, our health, uh, organization, of our original health, and now offer, uh, mental awareness and, and offers some psychiatric help. So we're in each division through East County.
Anything else that I could do thing out?
Thank you. You did a nice job. Okay, uh, that is a, well, a nice delegation we have. Working through, going down the agenda. Of course, this being the second meeting, there is no administrative reports. There's no copier's night, and of course, no old business. The new, um, business is appointment to the jury commission. If you notice in your packet, you've had an application, uh, from Mrs. Fanny Langston, who has already served on this for two terms, and is asking to be reappointed. Why, it's a pleasure.
Madam Chairman, I'd like a motion to reappoint, uh, Mrs. Fanny Langston to the jury commission.
Motion's debated and properly seconded and in discussion. It's nice, I'm pleased that she stepped forward to, um, do this again. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, opposed five to zero, and you will send her a notification that she's been reappointed. Okay, moving on. The repeal of impact fees, um, concerning a recent court ruling. Um, we have that information. Um, County Manager, would you like to hear some details?
This summer, there was a new house bill that was ratified that changed the way that impact fees can be charged and effective on October 1st, 2017. The new rules will take effect, and the current way that we charge impact fees will not be allowed under the new ruling. This comes about after I've set through a webinar with the school and government, and it's my recommendation that effective tonight, that there would be a motion made to repeal our impact fees effective tomorrow, which would mean that if you were to connect, then would not, you would still pay your fee for your meter, but you would not pay the impact fee at a thousand dollars. And over the course of the year, we will take a look at the best way, if necessary, to move forward with what would be called a system development fee.
And this has been across the state. A lot of localities and counties are having to repeal their ordinances on, or the fees on impact.
Madam Chairman, my concern is that, you know, when you say repeal, you know, we're going to do a way with it, and then we're going to have to implement something else. Uh, we probably want to look at suspending it, if we're going to do anything, until we can find out what is the legitimate way to, uh, make that charge. Because there's going to be some charge. Because citizens who paid a thousand-dollar impact fees over the last ten, fifteen, twenty years, certainly going to say, well, what about my, what about my thousand dollars that I paid?
Sir, on the, the second slide shows the way that it is allowed in your packet. It is the, it's the email, and then there's a slide that shows the house bill, and then the next one is a slide from the school and government, which shows what is allowed, what is not allowed, and then what is questionable.
My best one.
And in order to, um, determine that, we will have to undergo, if you want to develop a system development fee, the best way to describe it varies succinctly, because it took about an hour out of the one-and-a-half-hour webinar for them to explain it, is that professional engineer firm would have to come in, review all our figures, review water usage, sewer usage, and come up with the calculation to determine how to assess this fee. And then there are also ways that you can use those fees and ways you cannot use those fees. There's also times when you can't implement those fees, and when there are times you cannot implement those fees. So that's why it's recommended that we quit collecting them as of tomorrow, and over the next year, we can look at what we need to do. Um, our current engineering firm, they do conduct these visibility studies for jurisdictions if they want to implement a system development fee.
Madam Chairman, um, County Manager, first of all, I have our, our legal counsel look at this. My concern is that when you repeal it, there could be the opening door for some legal repercussions to the county. Uh, I would like to hear our attorney say that he sees no repercussions as a result of repealing and starting a charge. Uh, what, all that you said, what you're saying is that, uh, we can make a charge, but an engineering firm has to come in and say, okay, over a period of ten years, I'm just giving an example, over a period of ten years, you're going to need to do X, Y, and Z upgrades or maintenance. In order to do that, you're going to have to have X number of dollars over and beyond which you normally collect. And therefore, you can have an impact fee possibly of five hundred, seventy, or a thousand dollars. You're justifying why you're collecting those funds. And until we get that in place, uh, unless we do this the right way, citizens that have paid, or businesses that have paid these impact fees, are going to certainly, I feel that they would certainly, uh, have a different reason to challenge, uh, why I have to stop it now. It's, it's not legal. You stopped it. Where's my thousand dollars? I want my thousand dollars back. So, you know, before I would vote to say repeal it, I basically, I would vote to suspend it until we find out what we can charge. Uh, but certainly I would not want to repeal it, uh, to say to stop, uh, to suspend it. And then, uh, when it is put in place, those that have been connected and that didn't pay anything, then we would have, we would go back and say, well, this is the actual charge you're going to pay a thousand, this is seven fifty.
And you can't, and it cannot be retroactive based on the information that was provided by the attorneys with the school and government. And our attorney has not reviewed it, but this is all based on, like I said, discussion of school and government, and also previous discussion before the webinar with the representative from the NCACC.
Well, so you're saying that they basically said that we should repeal it?
Yes, sir.
Well, I would, I would want to have the, our legal counsel endorse that and, uh, and say that that is the correct way. Uh, but I feel that the opening door for, uh, other citizens to challenge the cost that they paid in order to, to, uh, have the water connected.
Well, this is a recent deal that's come up, and the case, you know, very definitely says you cannot, it's illegal to the light the night of October 1st, 2017. So, I mean, that's...
Well, unless, and here's what, what you've got an allowed condition there.
And ours is not allowed based on the way ours is written. And that was a discussion with the NCACC. I was contacted specifically because of the way ours is worded.
I think we, I think we have to, if we want to make charges going forward, we have to adopt a plan.
Correct.
Uh, which would probably mean we'd have to have a hearing.
Yes.
I followed, I followed this online, uh, this case. It was either Southern Pines or Pinehurst.
In Morcat.
It's Carthage, the city of Carthage.
Carthage, the city of Carthage. Anyway, there was a developer there, and he was getting hit, uh, I think part of the way he was selling his properties, as was. He was selling a house, the land, and he was paying on the hookup fees and stuff like that. And it got to be a, a huge number. I think the numbers changed, maybe after he bought his property or something, and, you know, say, 200 acres, and he starts breaking it up. And, uh, and he brought it to light. Um, so I did follow it, uh, for a little bit, but had not seen this until, until we got it.
Well, you know, if you take someone that's connected, we're going to have to send our water department out there. They have to take a backhoe. They got to put some pipe out there. It could cost, you know, several hundred dollars just to get connected initially. And, uh, you know, you're not talking about system maintenance, uh, over the next five, 10 years, wherever. So, you know, there is some impact, uh, because those properties, you know, the lines they go by there, but certainly there's not, there would be a pipe, there's a pipe through that property.
But that's a hookup fee.
There is a, we do charge a connection fee, and there is a difference.
That's a connection between a connection fee and...
And, and what about that?
And, and well, it depends on what size meter you receive. I sent that, let me pull that up. But I'm going to use my, myself as an example. We recently built a house. We had to pay the impact fee, plus we had to pay the connection fee for the meter. And the water line went right by the property that we built the house on. So there was no additional expense to the county to extend the water line.
So the hookup fee was, was that?
Yes, and it's based on, and I can pull that up, because they're based on the size of meters.
But people will still have to pay the connection fee. I mean, that is legal.
Right. The tap-on fee is anywhere between seven hundred and fifty to two thousand dollars, depending on the, um, size that you receive. For water and for sewer, it's a four-inch line, it's four thousand five hundred, and a six-inch, which are the only two options you have, are five thousand five hundred.
And the second number you gave was sewer?
It's five thousand five hundred. That was for a six-inch line.
What was the, what was the title of that, that was that?
That's the sewer tap-on fee.
Sewer tap, was a tap-on, not, uh?
Not the impact.
Okay.
Impact is like, well, if you're doing a trap line, isn't it?
No, it's for, well, it's for anyone who...
But I mean, if they have, if you have to, let's say...
Propulsion.
Proposit, but let's say I would line ends two miles from where I want to build my home or build a, or put up a apartment. The impact is that I would have to pay for the lengthening.
Well, that's what, well, not the way ours is. Just an impact fee, which is one residential equivalent unit equals four thousand dollars. So if they anticipate that on average you use four thousand dollars in your home, then you pay a thousand dollars impact fee.
If we needed to extend it, using you as an example, if we would want to extend our sewer line, we wouldn't extend it to capture your household. You'd have to weigh, it's like paving a road. There'd have to be so many houses per, per mile before we would...
To address Commissioner Jordan's concern, if I'm reading this right, the impact fee of your charges is illegal. They will become illegal on October 1st.
By the state, by the, the house bills, really?
There's no legal question, nothing to go back on it. It's illegal, not, not...
Well, it does, and the farther slides, it does say, if you have charge or are charging, you know...
It's illegal.
There are requests.
Well, while I'm reading, the second sentence goes on.
In the email, you refer to you.
Right. It will be illegal on October 1st. From NCACC, right now, they do, they recommend getting rid of that one maybe.
So now, when I was reading it, um, again, to restate what Commissioner Bellman just stated, October 1st, to charge an impact fee is illegal.
Based on how we are charging.
Based on the way we're charging. So the word, the phrase, "impact fees," and the way it's being, um, directed or derived, um, is the incorrect, is the part that says illegal. We'll be able to, it gives some options in here. So what we will need to do is choose an option that's good for the county and for our system. But if we choose one of these in here, which says allowed or something like that, are we going to have to get an engineer to approve?
Based on, and most, and the, they mainly focus on the system development fee, which, on that slide that you're referencing, what a slide before, where it says the allowed contractual charge. That is basically what most of the webinar talked about, which would be replacing the impact fee, because you're already allowed to charge the tap and connection fee and the user fee, which is what we cover, which is what we already charge. You charge the anywhere between seven fifty and a thousand, and then you charge for monthly water usage.
I recall when we put in the water system in, in Gates County, and when the water system was put in, that impact fee, and, and a letter came out, uh, some of you all might remember, uh, saying, if you don't sign up now, you're going to have to pay this impact fee, and, uh, to cover, uh, future costs of expanding and, and, uh, maintaining and, and repairing the system and so forth. That was in there. And this basically, this first one here, where it says allowed charges, it says assessed on developer or property owner pursuant to development agreement or other contractual agreements. You've got to have an agreement with them. Then it says calculated to cover direct and indirect cost of expanding slash extending public infrastructure to serve property. So that's what was, that's what the, the impact fee was supposed to do, from my understanding. And, and that's why I'm a little confused going, that's what we, we said when it was, when it was implemented. I remember when, uh, when we got county court. You had your own private courts. I'm sure you remember that, I told you. And, uh, but I mean...
You know, we pulled it at law.
Sure. Uh, so I'm just a little confused on, on why we're, we're saying that we don't have any justification, and, and I, I agree, it should need to be reviewed and make sure that it covers this. But to me, uh, I thought that's what we were doing all along. That's what I, the impact fee, that's what it's covering. This is the second bullet, where it says, uh, to cover costs, direct and indirect costs of expanding slash extending public infrastructure to serve property. And that's what I thought we were doing the whole time.
But we do it, I think, number two, tapping net fee and user fee, they are still legal, because the top one is not legal.
Well, if, if we've got this justification...
The contractual charge is legal.
Oh, it's legal.
And it's charged.
It was charged. But, but you'd have to calculate it.
If you look at, if you look at the, uh, not allowed, look at the not allowed impact fee, and then the allowed contractual charge. You notice two key things on, on the not allowed. It says automatically assessed on the developer as a condition of development. Okay? He couldn't develop it. It was a condition for him to even begin to develop it. And that's only on the developer. If you look at what is allowed, it says contractual charge. And the contractual, meaning you're in and into an agreement, whereas over here on the impact, it says automatically assessed. But over here, under the contractual charge, Natalie, it says assessed on the developer or the property owner, um, which can be two different people. Sounds like the situation in Carthage was, maybe the guy didn't own the land... but he was like the developer, you know, come in there to-
Well, if, if, if someone wants to come into county or, and use their own, you don't have to, to, to county board.
Sure.
Sure.
So there's no-
That doesn't, that wouldn't apply.
But that would apply, so we-
Exactly.
But when they, but when they, they want to enter as a participant in our water system-
Or sewer system.
Or sewer system, we have to, I mean, the state is telling us, Commissioner, you have to, the state is telling us, you have to do this. You have to do this right here. And if you don't have it in place, which we're doing what's not allowed. So we've got to develop this block over here so we can start back charging.
Well, calculated, well, I, I don't disagree with that, but I'm, you know, what I'm saying is that there's gonna be a, that was the intent. We don't have the calculations to justify it.
And here's the second part of that too, that second bullet. Um, and Natalie, I think you read this earlier. They're also going, the state is going to also tell us through this House Bill how we can spend that money. So we can't just, I mean, I know we s- we spend our money on our system. But if we were a county that was not doing that, they're gonna put a stop to that. They're gonna say, basically, I think if you're collecting water, it's gonna be on the expansion or future repairs or development.
Right, if you, and this is, is the system development fund is where they will tell you how to spend your money. But basically, it still has to be on capital improvements, which can include construction contract surveying, engineering, land acquisition, or even paying off current debt on the water system.
So let me, um, I don't know if you have this information, but do we have any open applications? Water or sewer on anybody that's ready to be charged?
Definitely not for sewer and, uh, about a hundred percent positive, not for the water. Based on, about two weeks ago, I had to follow up today with it. But I'm just making this recommendation based, based on that webinar and, uh, prior discussion with NCACC, which did contact me directly, one of four counties.
Not because you called them?
Not because I called, they called me, because of the way we charge our impact fees.
Well, the legislation clearly says you can't do it on October first, so-
Natalie, we can take this a little, but I still think that our attorney should provide, uh, some guidance on how we do this as far as repealing versus suspending. We know we're gonna end up some charge, but if we repeal the, the charge, all right, say it takes us two years, our year, to find out what we're gonna charge. We can't go back and, and charge other people, which then we can't just kind of retroactive.
Yeah, I, I think what you, what you're actually saying is, we need to find, we need to find a new formula right away.
Well, we had to have an engineer to help get the indirect costs and-
They said, there was a question from a large county who have engineers on staff, can they do it in-house? And they said, you have engineers in-house who can do it. It's actually, did not say you could not. But based upon conversation with our current engineer with Masco, he said lots of counties have contacted him about this.
So probably, the, the formula, do you think the formula might end up being a, a water system neutral formula? In other words-
I can't even begin to guess, I admit.
But you know what I'm saying?
It went a little above my head as far as finance and calculations with as deep as they got into that webinar.
You, you follow what I'm saying, Commissioner, Natalie, I'll let you charge three million dollars in two thousand and eighteen, when you only needed seven hundred and fifty.
Yeah, but, but, you know, it's, it's obvious that you need funds to upgrade, maintain-
And plan for future.
And, and exactly, and stand. And so, uh, there's gonna be some charge. You know, it may not be a thousand dollars. And it could be, it could be over a thousand dollars. Once the engineer calculates and pays, we could be charging twelve hundred and fifteen.
But certainly the engineer would, would have to take into consideration the age of our system. And knowing that the scale of our repairs is gonna move up in the near future.
And if the, the volume increases, that, that's additional pressure on our whole system. But that still doesn't give us the range of the problem that we have October first, twenty seventeen. And that is staring in face. And plus, we can still have the tap-on fees, um, charged. So that if Mr. Jordan was going to build a new home, he would still have to pay. So that tap-in fee, which-
That comes across the backhoe and the pipe and, and the, uh, water plant person that'll come down. But that does nothing as far as having to fund the system so that we can make money over the years. And even the water bill on the sewer street that we charge, that basically just covers administrative and, and labor costs. You know, it's, it's not a lot of additional, uh, funds that are, that we collect over and above what's extended, the maintenance of the system.
Well, we know what arch- architect and design fees are, they're going, and that won't be a small number. Madam Chairman, um, would you entertain a motion?
Yes, I will.
We're looking at House Bill four thirty-six, and it's been ratified and it's illegal to, uh, charge it. And thank you, the impact fee, as of October first, we're not in the habit of breaking laws. I, I would make the motion, Madam Chairman, that, um, what's the word that we're looking for, not to extend, but-
Repeal?
Madam Chairman, I make the motion that we repeal, um, our impact fees effective September nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen, in order to address House Bill four thirty-six that has been ratified and sits before us tonight.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion, Madam Chair.
Motion's made and seconded, additional, any comments?
No, but I noticed, and I know we didn't make any comments, 'cause nobody else saw it. Look, it appears they quickly, um, struck the ten-year statute of limitations.
So then, Commissioner-
Right.
It looks, ten years, they quickly, obviously struck that ten-year statute of limitations.
Yeah.
One picture there.
Yeah.
For obvious reasons, I think.
And of course, we're not the, I mean, most of the counties in North Carolina and municipalities are in Dutch over this.
Well, we're gonna have a lot of development, we're gonna, we're gonna get some this year.
So, what, what, what are they saying? They're saying that if you're illegally charged, that you can even go back and have to pay. So, if, I think we're, we're legally charging. And, and my, my, my discussion, I don't believe this. I cannot vote for this because, first of all, we have not had, uh, our attorney to take a look at it and decide what type of, of repercussions we might have as a result of this and what is the proper language to use. I would prefer suspend, uh, and I'm not sure that's the right word, without people counseling. And so I cannot vote for this, um, based on the way that the motion was made. It was made, if the way I possibly could, but I can't support it this way, because I feel that we're opening the door to possible repercussions from our citizens who have paid impact fees over the years. And if, and if, and if this is illegal, we gotta repeal it, then the ten-year statute of limitations going back, we might have to pay impact fees back from, from town to the citizen.
But we, we, when we were charging it, it was legal.
Still legal up until October first?
October first, twenty seventeen.
After that, those charges can be, uh, ratified.
Instead of that week, we have to-
Well, we're, we're saying they're legal because we said, we're saying that we did designate those funds to maintain upgrades and so forth. And we're saying that, where, where is it written? I, I was recalled years ago that we did get a letter or something about that. But, uh, I cannot vote for it, as it's, as the motion has been presented.
Well, listen. If you see, and, and we are in the, um, discussion session. If you see the, the second bullet point there, where the ten-year statute is struck, it says must award if abuse or discretion. So, we were doing something that we believed to be legal, okay? But if somebody challenged it, what's gonna, what's gonna take place is, it would be some impartial party, third party to come in and say, was their charge, was it excessive? And if it was, then, then that's where that would come into play. Just because we charged impact fee doesn't mean that it was excessive. And we did look around and-
And then to Jack, what they would look at, the way I read it and, and studying, I did from the Carthage situation, it would only be a percentage of what was determined, you know, which if the size of the dollars, say, if they determine that four hundred dollars of that was not necessary, that's what would be in the litigation.
Well, that's easy, you can determine that very easily. You look back over our budget and financial report over the last twenty years, at the end of the year, you can see how much, uh, water fund collection was rolled over to fund down. You can see, you know, you can look, we've gotta have a record, how much impact fees we charged, how much upgraded. And, uh, you know, we, we're in pretty good shape.
Yeah, but we wouldn't be the ones to determine whether it was excessive. It'd be, it would be a court, I would think, that would determine whether it was excessive.
And you go to the next slide, it says whatever your unit is charged or is charging, unlawful fee, three-year statute of limitation for recovery of unlawful fees, charges or collection by county and municipalities, all the units. Says local government award or sewer, um, Fort May award attorney fees and costs, unless we're awarded if abuse or discretion. And it says on new development, a six percent interest per year.
I'll ready a vote.
Are you calling for a vote?
No, I, you, you have, you have, that's it.
Okay, I'm going to call for a vote. Okay, I'm showing hands. All those who would like to repeal the use, the impact fees on water and sewer as of September nineteenth, twenty seventeen, say, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Okay, but it's four of one. But it's four of one. And then we will instruct our county manager to begin working on what we need to do to-
Madam Chairman, I would also ask that, you would ask the county manager to have our county attorney to look this over and make sure that, uh, there's no repercussions as a result of us repealing the bill, if necessary.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to, uh, as county manager, you know, she was in on the webinar, what are her thoughts about preparing for the future, um, to be able to charge impact fees? Any thoughts on that?
That's why in the memo, I said we're gonna take the next year to work on, and it's not gonna take the whole year. We're gonna, uh, get together with Timmy Heschbeth and Thane Hendricks and look at the numbers, look at, uh, what we have that we know will be coming on more in the next little bit, what the needs of the water system, which we all know there's leaks. So we keep repairing those and figure out if, what's the best course of action. If we do need to do the analysis for the system water, system development, or if we need to raise some fees in other forms through the tap or through the connection.
Um, I would like to know from, say, January two thousand sixteen through the end of se- of, the end of sixteen, what our collections for impact fees were.
I can't break it down like that, but I do have right here how much we collected in fiscal, the end of fiscal year-
July, June.
And as of July two thousand sixteen, for fiscal year sixteen, excuse me, June two thousand sixteen, we collected twenty-nine thousand dollars. So that was twenty in a home, businesses that connected.
That was for the entire year.
Yes, sir. And then for seventeen, I remember only twelve, I think it was twenty-six. Yes. It's twenty-six thousand, so it was twenty-six homes for businesses.
I thought the first number was from, was sixteen, seventeen?
No, the first number was fifteen, sixteen, this one was sixteen, seventeen.
So it's twenty-six thousand.
I'm, I'm just, we had a water fund.
That'll take some digging of the system for me to find that, 'cause I don't use it every day to pull that one up. But we can actually do, look that up, and she can even leave that in.
My, I'm sure it's worth seven hundred dollars. So you take twenty-nine thousand over twenty a period, you know, it's not even close to over a half a billion dollars.
Anybody wanna guess what an architect is gonna, would charge?
An engineer.
An in- excuse me, an engineer to develop that.
We did not begin charging impact fees until two thousand thirteen, according to what I can pull up in the system. And that's just water, that's not the sewer. But it may have been, but it may have been char- broken out in a different way. But, and here, it goes, it's two thousand thirteen, the impact fees have gone directly to a line entitled water impact fees.
I bet an engineer would charge us twenty-five thousand dollars to do an analysis.
Well, we haven't had sewer systems very long, so-
And which account, basically, who that was, the, 'cause there's not that many that have, some that have come online.
Okay, uh, next is volunteer five department, oh, excuse me, volunteer five department annual report discussion. Uh, Commissioner Felton, I believe?
Yeah, this is something I've, I've been wanting to do for a while. And actually, I thought we had a policy on this, but evidently we do not. But I think for a couple of reasons, it's something that we need to do. There is some talk of coming before the board and asking for an increase in the fire fee. And also for the protection of each individual department and the county, I think it needs to be done. And what I would like to see, what I would like to suggest, and we'll make a motion if it's appropriate, that we require each department, the five departments, each department to present a semi-annual report. That report will contain the number and types of calls answered for that six-month period. The revenues that have been taken in and the source of those revenues, whether they're through the county, fundraisers, donations, tax refunds, or any other way. And especially the expenses that are being in kind of by the fire department, such as building expense to upkeep on the building, the utilities that are needed for the building, the insurance on it. And the same thing pretty much for the equipment, the trucks and everything else that worked with the equipment, the maintenance costs, the fuel costs, and once again, insurance. Insurance is one of the biggest costs that we have. And then for, to break, continue to break down the expenses, we have for the personnel, we have the PPE, the personal protection, the equipment. Uh, that's very expensive for each person and has to be reused on, on a regular basis. We have to pay a working cost policy, which is a pretty good high thing. And other- And other causes that would, costs that would, uh, be associated with personnel. In other words, I'd like to see where the revenue comes from, how much it amounts to, what the expenses are, and how that money is being spent.
And you, you prefer it be done semi-annually?
I would request it semi-annually.
Currently, there's only one fire department that does that on a regular basis. They might not provide all of that detail, but there is only one fire department that provides any sort of report on a semi-annual basis.
And we do require people from the different agencies that receive the money generally have to give us a report.
Rescue squads, do you think?
Yeah, rescue squads require to do it.
The fire department's very dear to my heart, I've been there for a good while. And I'd like to see this done to, I think it would be a protection for each department in case there were an audit that comes up, they would, here it is right here, no problem. And also, uh, uh, protection for the county in case any, any question ever came up.
And if I may, I'm sorry, and there is one other department that does about a year of report.
Are there any paid personnel over there?
No.
Fire chief, what is it?
No one has paid a tenant, but any fire staff.
All right, you make up these reports, who make them up?
Treasury.
In our case, uh, Treasury.
And then there's signed off, there's also reports submitted by your that signed by the president.
Now, the record of the calls are all kept in that one one too, so.
Yeah, that, that part could be handled, but it'd be a simple thing to put it on this report also, be able to look at it all on one page.
And each department should be easy for them to fill out that form, don't you think?
Yes, if, if any one does not have this information, then trouble could be, um, this is something that everybody should already have and just write a name, send it in.
'Cause isn't a lot of that information required with insurance ratings as well?
Yes.
For different reports that you already have to submit? And they can't, and the fire departments do come to the counties and ask us to fill out forms or to verify how much, I mean, uh, the funds that they've received from the county each year.
And what, now that we're saying that, we, uh, well, we have to have an inspection every year just to maintain the, that was a nine S, it's just makes, makes you a fire, fire department. And then approximately every, supposed to be every three years, right now it's closer to ten years, because they don't have the personnel. We have a, in-depth inspection and all of this material is asked for in, in part of that rating instruction. And that affects every homeowner in the county, but it affects your homeowner's policy.
Now, if, if I may, for discussion purposes too, think about, uh, and because Commissioner Jordan said something to run me on that, and that is maybe a form be developed, so that we all be informed.
That's what I was just thinking as well, is that since we don't have paid personnel installed on here, that we as a county would develop a form, you know, prior to, if, uh, collected fire fees being administered, please complete the following, and just handle that, uh, the cost for these different items and for revenue received. And all it basically have to do is fill it in and, uh, submit that report prior to, uh, receiving, uh, the fire fees that were collected.
And, uh, in addition to, would that report be submitted to the county manager?
Right, and well, we, Commissioner, also yes, we can make a look at it.
Since they do receive those funds.
Commissioner Felton, the, uh, the calendar year, how does a year run for fire department?
We run calendar year, I would go to my other department.
Your tax year, yeah, your tax year's calendar year. So, but that would still, I mean, as long as there were two reports. Because one would be received in December and one in June.
Right.
Well, I see you that, uh, Commissioner Felton's got some notes down there. Uh, that would be the beginning of the creation of a form if he'd be willing to submit that. Somebody might wanna add something to it?
Be glad to bring it back to the board for approval. And we have county manager, uh, develop a, some type of letter just to let fire department know that, that this, if a question we complete, uh, at least annually prior to, um, distribution of our fire fee funds.
Okay, do we need a motion to, for the development of this?
They starting something?
Yes, okay.
And, and view what we just said, uh, how, how would it suit everybody? If I give mine to Melissa and then her write it up and then bring it back to the other one, we'll discuss it then.
Okay, so.
Bring us something like a form for the fire department.
Yeah, a separate form.
Motion leaving for that?
Yeah, we, we need a motion for that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that, uh, Commissioner Felton, uh, given his list of items requested to the county manager out of court, uh, for development of a list that be approved by commissioners to be submitted to the fire department, or five fire departments in the county, requesting detailed information, uh, prior to seeing county boards.
Okay, motions been made, second?
Second, I have a motion.
Okay, second, the motion's been made, a second? I think it's six fire departments, it costs court fee.
Five and a half.
Five and a half, whatever you call court fee.
I believe Sundberg has turned in, well, I think they've tried, they have turned in a report for court fee at one time.
I saw one.
I believe they did.
Whatever the correct number is.
For each fire department in the county?
How about that?
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor of the motion to create a form for the fire departments to record financial information for, to give to the county commissioners on a semi-annual basis? All those that they were there, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, but motion carries five, zero. Okay, approval of the bloodborne antigen policy.
This has been made, uh, request has been made to update this, especially due to, uh, reviews from GITS. And I would like to add on page three, under exposure determination, four point one B, one, uh,
Okay.
To include GITS drivers.
Four point one.
Okay, under B, four point one B.
Oh.
Okay, they, decent exposure determination also through-
Right, and if you read number one, it had social workers, yes, include GITS drivers.
I also think that, up and down, you may need to check on this, but on page four, under four point three, B.
Four what, four point four B?
I'm sorry, four point four B, I'm sorry.
Employees who decline?
Yeah, employees who decline hepatitis B vaccine are required to sign a hepatitis B vaccine declination form and have the option of taking the vaccine at a later date if occupational exposure continues. See attention eighty-one. And I, I, I really feel that we need a, a liability statement there in that form or somewhere saying that if you refuse, that you do not hold the county accountable if you're, uh,
Honors.
Yeah, hold, a hold on this in, in addition to that. Because the way I look at this, and really, if they can refuse it, but guess what? If they happen to get injured, they, they could, uh, have just capable liability status, yeah. If there's nothing there tells them that if you don't sign it, guess what?
The origin, the origin of this document.
It was based upon the one that hurt from county adopted, I believe it was last year or the year before. It was adopted within the past two years. 'Cause it is more, excuse me, it is more detailed than what we currently have.
If you, um, look at the form, we could certainly add a sentence on the form where they sign, uh, uh, to hold, you know, homeless, if you have become infected.
Sure. I, I would think that we want the county manager to call the LGC or the legal folks there about that particular-
Yeah, I think we would be, yeah.
And tell them that we, um, we saw a potential gap there for the declination form and see if, see what their thoughts are. If we wanted to add something, should we add it there or add it back on the form top or something like that?
Well, I think we could add it at both places, but I think it needs to be on the form.
Yeah.
Because that's what we will keep in our folder.
And that's the portable side.
That's what, that's on. Uh, yeah, we go through this every year at school, so it's, you have to watch a video and sign that you've seen it and done it. Okay, so can you see about making us, the whole list came. So, um, do I hear, table this until we get that language in there?
Time sensitive, Natalie.
It's waited this long, we can wait till the October meeting.
Also, one other question, there's a question on page nine nine. Says the U.S. Department of Labor, um,
What number?
Uh, six point one. Why, why is that, that not, you know, we got the enclosures, why are these not included? These items?
They can be, we just did not include all of them for your documentation.
Well, that is, that is a part, that should be-
Right.
Right, okay. We've got all the enclosures, but we don't have six point one.
And you do realize also how thick that twenty-nine CRF is as well?
Well, you know-
So I think, I'm pretty sure that's why Hertford County referenced it and then not provide all of that documentation.
Well, yeah, I mean, we should reference it instead of saying opinions, but what we're saying is in here. So I think we need to clarify that, that's not an opinion, it is, uh, it's a reference or-
Well, you need to use that for six one, six two, and six three.
Right, all three of those.
'Cause they are the laws or the statutes that we're adhering to.
And Madam Chair, we'll see this on our table.
Yes, okay. I believe that concludes our new business, we're dying to citizens' comments. Is anyone, of course, this is up here on the table, it's our, your son. Does anyone like to come up to, to the podium? No one has made a mad dash to the podium?
Well, thank you.
All right, we'll, we'll have commissioners' comments, again, there, Commissioner Freeman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, appreciate everyone's attendance, certainly, for the thoughts that are brought forward to us for us to look into. Uh, I believe I'm tied with, uh, Commissioner Felton on, uh, on personnel attending from the area, so I appreciate your attendance. But, uh, most of we do appreciate, uh, our folks recognizing things to look into and for us to see if we can develop those and make those decisions, so thank you.
I think there's three people here from three different, um, townships, uh, or-
Give me a three-way tie.
It was a three-way tie. Jack and I, I don't know, go ahead.
I'm in there with you, man.
I want to set the record straight.
You had to flip a coin, man.
Well, I have to commend everybody then from stretching out across the county. Thank you very much. We, we do have a little friendly contest up here sometime, and most of the time you folks win, but it didn't, tonight we had a three-way tie. That's all, we won't mention the Sundberg injection sign at all, another Sundberg. Won't even mention that. But appreciate everybody coming out and paying attention to what was going on and voicing your opinions and valuable part of the report you gave us, and I thank you for that. Challenge is good, man. We just look forward to the next time.
I, I do thank, I, I just really thank all of us citizens being here and, and being a part of helping us to make this county what it needs to be. And, uh, we go through many discussions many times, but we try to make the best decision possible. And, uh, just appreciate you being here, appreciate all of the various agencies that work with us and, uh, county and all these, and just everyone who tried to make the county better, we appreciate it.
Well, a lot of the people from our precinct, they leave the windows open and we leave this door open so they can be a part of this meeting. So I don't know how many of them there are, but probably one to three. But anyway, uh, thanks, thank you everyone for, for coming. Um, it's good seeing you here and, uh, voicing your, your opinions on your issue, Mr. Harder. And, uh, this is called democracy, and democracy at work. So we appreciate your anticipation tonight. And, uh, anyway, uh, I thank all my colleagues for the spirited debates tonight and, um, thank the extension service for beating us before the meeting.
I also thank everyone for coming and, um, certainly, as you can see, and not followed by drones for the, tonight, certainly, I, I mean, as being a privacy issue, it's certainly, uh, it's something that we need to thank by and to, because certainly we, I would not want a drone coming over there watching everything you did, I, every, all the time. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. Uh, we certainly try to be responsible, uh, to our citizens and also responsible to our citizens about how we carry out, about doing our financials and, um, things like to the fire department. We want them to have what they need, but we also want them to spend it in a, um, juju-ish way.
Yeah, right.
Uh, at this time, and, you know, September seventeenth was constitutional day. And I, sometimes we don't pay much attention to these days in history, but the constitution, we have the oldest living constitution in existence today. You know, a lot of countries go through constitutions like, you know, I think Italy, I, I mean, they had since World War Two. You know, Alice has been around since seventeen eighty-nine. Uh, so, you know, we have something, it's not a perfect document, it is a living document. As we see, it is all the time we have to change, make amendments as the situations change, just as we have to make changes to ordinances we pass because we live in a changing world. But it is a guiding document for us, and we need to really make sure that, uh, young people understand their rights and privileges under that document. Uh, and it's got us this far, and hopefully it'll carry us in all two hundred and some years on. Does it have a safe trip home? Uh, we look forward to seeing you first Wednesday in October. Uh, and we'll continue our discussions there and get some follow-ups on some things that were current, you know? So, you know, like I said, have a safe travel and see you in October. And what is the date of your ducking thing?
October seventh, Saturday, September tenth.
Let me see, I might be busy. But anyway, uh, I will say, we'll talk about it, we'll talk. I don't think anybody will pay to see me dunk.
You sure about that?
I don't know. I think everyone at Dunk thinks thirty minutes on their feet. I'd be in line, too.
Okay, at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Say move.
Motion's been made, and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, meeting is officially over. Okay, uh, meeting is officially over.